Father, we thank you for this evening and for the not rain weather that we're having. We appreciate the sunshine. We ask that you be with each one of us that are here tonight. Help us to get through our agenda and accomplish some really good things for the city. Always think of coming here.
Welcome all our guest producers tonight. And we will begin. We'll entertain a motion to consideration to approve the agenda.
I'd like to remove 9C from the agenda this evening. I didn't have a chance to get my ducks in the roll.
9C?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to move it to the...
I'll move it to another meeting. I'll put it on the...
Later that. We're going to delete 9C. Any other changes?
No.
Are there any council introduced items that need to be placed on the agenda? entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the one change of deleting item 9C.
Sir.
Motion second in the other discussion. If not, those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Those no, all members voting for the motion. You have in your package there the minutes from June 20th council meeting, which we probably need to take action on this time unless anyone has any changes or corrections to those minutes. I have a motion. We approve those minutes.
Sir.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the same aye. Those no, all members voting for the motion. You have also in your package the financials for May for your review just for informational purposes. Any questions or comments regarding those? All right, then we'll go into our 10-minute public input period. We've had three individuals sign up. Mr. Jim Wyden.
Well, got a microphone? Mr. Mayor, council, I've been here before y'all before, and I hope that for this subject at least, it's the last time I'm here. For those in attendance, I live on Wooded Mountain Trail in Great Sky. It's one of the many streets in the city that have issues as far as debate as to whether they're private streets or whether they're actually have been accepted by the city. I hadn't planned to come here tonight. What brought me here was the headline of the Cherokee Tribune. And the reason I said I hadn't planned here is because there's a number of us in our subdivision who had pretty much given up on the process and had sought legal counsel and are actively considering and consulting with attorneys to bring a suit against the city. What I want to say about Great Sky, and I can't speak for any of the other subdivisions, is that in the last few months, in the last few years, as most of you know, I petitioned the city and asked the city how we got into this predicament. And finally, about six or eight weeks ago, I had a meeting, Scott, you were there, and some other folks were as well, where we actually looked over the documents that appeared to me to be signed as accepting the streets into the city's maintenance and repair. It was mentioned at the time that the understanding with the developer was that the streets had been accepted but only for the passage of vehicular traffic and not accepted into the fold of the city for maintenance. Well, in looking into this with some of our legal friends, there seems to be no difference in the documentation and the signing of these documents that deliver it to the city for permanent maintenance versus a verbal agreement saying, okay, here's the signatures, just like you would accept anything else, except we verbally agree that we're going to bring the streets up to code. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but I do know this. We're a nation of laws and facts. And the fact is that the plats were signed off on, and it appears, in the same manner as any other street that would be accepted and delivered to the city for permanent maintenance. The only difference being this verbal agreement between the developer who's not here to say one way or another whether this happened and the folks that maintain the streets for the city. So, that's a long way of getting to my point. You know, we've delivered the petitions to the city to accept the streets in good faith. We've been asking for this for several years. It's our opinion, and I speak for a group of about seven residents, and it'll probably be more soon, that we've suffered for years now when, in fact, the Great Sky streets before in question, River Birch Court, Wooded Mountain Trail, Morning Breeze Lane, and Mountain Laurel Walk had in fact been legally accepted by the city. And we've suffered diminution of property values, among other things. We've suffered damage to our property because of it. And what we want is we want our streets and our property to be repaired back to the condition it was, and we want it done soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Fowman?
Yes, sir. My item is actually on the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Counsel, pleasure to be in front of you tonight to talk a little bit about our situation. I'm the, basically, the president, chairman of Hidden Lake Homeowners Association. We have 67 homes in our subdivision and a nearby subdivision beside us. We have quite a number of total homes. Do you want to bring up the slides so we can start with them?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. You had signed up for the public input period. I see that you are on the agenda here, but as far as I'm concerned, we go ahead and listen to him, which is item...
It's item...
9D?
9D, yes, under the new business.
9D, 10D, I'm sorry, under new business. Is anyone object to go ahead and... Okay, let's go ahead and deal with that. That's just the point.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, slide one basically gives you just a perspective of the main feeder road to these two subdivisions. Now, we can actually call this a third subdivision because the senior living center, which is the assisted senior living center, which will be built at 3,000 Hidden Valley Drive, actually in and of itself, because of the amount of individuals that will be living there, is another subdivision. So, essentially, you've got three subdivisions at the base of this road called Hidden Valley Drive. Hidden Valley Drive comes off of the Holly Springs Street called Ash Street, which is directly off of Marianna Highway area. We're in Ward 3. So, it's, right now, it's currently about one and a half lanes. It's three tenths of a mile in length. There's really no proper base. It was basically put over mud. I believe that Mr. Thacker probably was the first one to build this road since his property was at the base of Hidden Valley Drive. I don't know the full history of the situation. But the problem that he had was he came off of a slope that goes under a right-of-way controlled by the Georgia power. And as a result of that, it follows literally the edge of a creek. So, it comes almost to 60% drop-off down into this little valley. And it's absolutely impossible in winter icy snow conditions to go up that street. Now, if you take into consideration the safety issue, it makes it a very serious problem, particularly for the ingress and egress of ambulances and other emergency vehicles for the senior living center. So, we've got 138 homes in the creek. We've got 67 in Hidden Lake subdivision. And so, again, it's 205. And we're estimating it's about 800 transits a day plus postal, school, service, but... And then you add on top of that the emergency vehicles. And you can see the slope there coming off of the top of the hill, which is Ash Creek, Ash Street, which is Holly Springs. Now, there is an assumption, I spoke with Hooky, and he told me that there was an assumption that part of that road belonged to Holly Springs and part of that road belonged to Canton, and then the pavement down the middle belonged to Cherokee County. It's interesting that I spoke to Holly Springs, and they sent me an email. I'll just read this briefly. This is Robert Logan.
Sure.
Mr. Fowman, I spoke with Bobby Dyer, City Attorney, and Dave, and Jimmy, and Jody West this afternoon regarding Hidden Valley Drive. And they sent me the letter from the city of Holly Springs. "All gentlemen concede that Hidden Valley Drive is in unincorporated Cherokee County. None of the right-of-way along Hidden Valley Drive is in the city limits of Holly Springs. Therefore, the city of Holly Springs has no authority over the roadway." So, they're basically stepping aside and saying that they're not going to be involved one way or the other regarding the outcome of this road. Next slide, please. Now, these are just some views of the road in its current condition. And of course, it's servicing, as I said, about 800 normal vehicles a day. But the problem is that the senior living center is generating anywhere from 1,500 to 2,500 heavy trucks. Now, those trucks can be anywhere from five tons up to 15 tons. They're concrete trucks, they're dirt trucks, they're landscaping trucks. There's going to be a ton of these trucks coming back and forth up and down this road over the ensuing development of this project, which we believe to have a estimated completion date sometime between November, December, January of 2013 to 2014, the January date. The assisted living center has 60, and there's your truckloads of dirt, hundreds of additional concrete and other things. It's under construction right now. It's moving forward. Spoke with Brian Sticker, and they're on track to hopefully have it completed by November. But there's penalties if it's not. The big issue, of course, is the winter icing and snow problems that will take place, and of course, the access, safety-wise, of people down there. This is, lower photo is Ash Street. And of course, it's had a lot of collateral damage with the heavy trucks coming up and down Ash Street. Next slide. This shows the only egress to the Hidden Springs townhomes, and this is controlled by the Cherokee County Fire Department. This is an egress that comes off of Hidden Valley Drive, goes into the back entrance of the townhomes, which is not part of our city. That's Holly Springs. This is next door to Hidden Valley Drive. This is the only component of roads that go into that area. And this would be the detour route if the top of the road is completely needed to be re-engineered, top of Hidden Valley Drive. This would allow us to go into the townhomes temporarily while both lanes of that road were being re-engineered. So, that's the reason why I showed you this particular... The only requirement that they would have if they participated in this is that we would pave one lane and then put flagging on either side to be route traffic temporarily until Hidden Valley Drive was completed. So, the main issue is really safety. There's also a large number of residents that go up Hidden Creek from the Hidden Creek subdivision. Very few from our subdivision actually walk it, but a number of people in Hidden Creek walk it up to the Kroger and Prominent Point. So, there's children, there's baby strollers, there's school buses coming up and down the road, there's all these trucks going up and down the road. So, there's definitely a need for a sidewalk, because right now they're either pushed into the grass or weeds, or they're pushed over onto the hillside, or there's a creek following the left side so they can fall down the creek if they're moved off the road quickly. So, what needs to be done? Well, we feel that the county currently has it, but, you know, in history-wise, we feel that the city took over the responsibility by default by creating a situation where the senior living center was proved. So, as a result of that, the city of Canton should really have control over that road from our perspective. How do you get it? Well, you've got some issues with the county. The county says when the construction is finished, they'll put 50K into the bucket and hopefully get it paid. I've spoken to the county engineer, and he, Jeff Morton, and he said, based on the top of the hill, he drove over there, looked at it, and of course, you did as well today as well. So, he said, "I will line up a surveyor and engineer to develop a plan to address the intersection. It looks like about 200 feet or so of Hidden Valley Drive would need to be filled or restructured in that area to make it more level, landing area to the stop sign. Should take about 60 days to complete their survey and design." This is from the county. This is Jeff Morton. So, where does the county sit in this situation? They basically are in a position to turn this over to the city. I think that they have an IGA in place or have sent one to the city, but none of it does include the adjustment of that grade slope, that 100-yard grade slope. So, we feel that once the county has said what they're going to do with regards to that grade slope, then that full presentation needs to be in front of the city to take over that road. If you could put sidewalks on it, that would be even better. But the main objective is to see that become a city road because it does be three taxpaying city subdivisions. And I'm using that in a sense saying that the senior living center will be taxed inside the city. So, that's basically our primary objective is to get you guys to take this thing over. So, what's the next slide? We've got 200 Canton City taxpayers and voters. They want to see the city take that over. We understand there's nothing that can be done structurally to that road until all of this construction is finished after the senior living center. So, we know that it would be either late winter or early spring before the construction process began. All I ask is for you to put this on the top of your agenda, to take action, to move this forward so that the city can take the information from the IGA, from the final evaluation from the county regarding the slope, and put it into a process. So, this feeder road for all of these people can be constructed in such a way and turned over to the city in such a way that it becomes part of the city of Canton and binds us better to the city of Canton. So, I ask if you actually move in that direction with safety of all of these residents at the premier and top of that request. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. The next individual, Brian Harris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Brian Harris. My partner and I own Imagine Ocean Aquarium Services, which is a business located in a shopping center off of Mount Vista Boulevard. The reason I'm here this evening is the community Baptist Church is seeking to occupy a couple spaces in our shopping center for their church. And I just wanted to address to you about a couple concerns that we have as a small business owner in the community. First off, we have no objections at all with churches and other cultural centers being located within the community. We feel that it's an integral part of the community for the churches to exist here. And we also understand that the PUD zoning that we're located in allows for retail businesses, commercial, residential, and cultural centers like this church to coexist together. But we also realize that part of the zoning is to avoid conflict between these entities and create kind of a buffer zone between them. And I'm sure you guys are aware, and ladies are aware, that there's a construction of a new hospital and medical complexes on 140 down the street from our shopping center. And we feel that when these are built and completed, that will want to bring other businesses into the area, which may benefit our shopping center, which is, you know, there's several vacant spaces in the shopping center right now. And other businesses and retail shops might want to lease a space there. We would rather see the shopping center spaces left available for these potential new tenants, small businesses, because we feel that it would better complement our business to have other businesses other than a church located in a shopping center. You know, we feel that the church may, if the church is located there, it may discourage other businesses from wanting to be in our shopping center due to a reduced atmosphere of retail with small business, basically. You know, we chose to have our business located in a shopping center because we wanted to be associated with other businesses. be associated with other businesses for reasons of mainly foot traffic, you know, cross customers relations between businesses. You know, we have customers that visit the restaurant and gas station and other stores, and their customers visit us as well, as well. And we understand that, that we may get some business and would appreciate the business from the, the church members. But the church has a finite amount of people attending the church on Sundays and possibly one or two days evenings during the week. But if other businesses are allowed to be in our shopping center, they would potentially have a larger customer base that would be more than just two or three days a week, which would increase foot traffic, we feel, a lot more than just having a church and located in the center. And also, there is limited parking in the shopping center, which is not a big issue. It is an issue. We are open on Sundays. We don't open until one o'clock, but still, there are, you know, like I said, there is potential for other businesses that may choose to lease a space in the shopping center to say, "Well, you know, we're open on Sundays. How will this affect our business if we decide to live here?" Also, our, we, we occupy one suite in the shopping center. The church, I think, is seeking to occupy two suites, and our occupancy limit is fourteen. The tanning salon next to us, their occupancy is fifteen. So I'm not sure how that would correspond with the potential occupancy limit that would be set for the church, but I understand that, you know, they may have fifty or sixty members. And, you know, that may, it may be different for a church versus a retail spot, as far as, you know, how they set the occupancy limit, so I'm not sure about that. But that's pretty much all I have to say, and I appreciate you listening to me and giving me a chance to address you. And, you know, we enjoy having our business here in Canton, and, like I said, basically we'd just like to maintain a retail and business atmosphere in our shopping center.
Thank you very much. Move on. That was all we have for the public input period. And we'll move into old business now, and the second reading and action on Etowah River Park budget amendment. And this, I believe, is a budget amendment for the amphitheater. Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to kinda touch on the, the fact of the amphitheater will be a major draw to this city and to downtown area, as well as all the restaurants and all that type. And it will be the cornerstone for the park. Anybody who's driven down to the end of Brown Industrial Park, if you look straight ahead, you see a lot of dirt there right now. But that's exactly what you'll see when you drive up. You'll be seeing that amphitheater right in front of you. So what I would like to do is make a motion tonight. This is a motion to fund the amphitheater for the two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars. And that's the motion.
Two-hundred, did you say two-hundred-and-ninety? What was it?
Two-nine-one-eight-forty. That's the motion to fund it. The money's to fund it.
To approve the second reading of the budget amendment?
No, sir. That's, that's just a motion to fund the monies. We have the monies available. I will, I want that motion. And then, after we approve that, then we'll come back for the ordinance.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
Any other discussion, questions?
I'd like to, if I can, just pass these around. I took the time to go over and meet with Mr. Hayes at Northside and asked what we needed to do to get their participation in the amphitheater. And his response was twofold. Number one, he explained that any such project is a marketing or an advertising funding for them, and that their participation is determined by what benefit they can get from marketing or advertising. The second thing that he brought out is their normal program, that you consider funding an entire project like this, is that they would be, if they were to ever sponsor it or usage of it, they'd like it over a longer period of time, with smaller amounts. The point that he brought out is, he has absolutely nothing to substantiate what usage that amphitheater would draw. He has no idea as to what signage or what benefit that would be as to advertising or marketing to Northside. Therefore, this time, he doesn't have an interest in it. And I thought, before we build it, what are we marketing? What are we advertising? We're advertising the city of Canton. We're advertising or marketing the city of Canton, its margins, its restaurants, and so forth. Do we have any information or statistics that would justify our expenditure of two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-eight-hundred-plus dollars? And I thought, well, how does Woodstock do it? We're constantly comparing what's, us to Woodstock and economic development. We're comparing ourselves into trying to get an ISO three like they do, and we're doing that constant comparison. So I brought this ad and passed around. As you probably know, Woodstock does not have an amphitheater. They have put it on sort of a hold until they get the financial justification to build it. But that doesn't stop them from doing concerts. They do it in the park. It doesn't stop them from forming a program. If you read this ad, you'll see they have a pretty extensive program already made. They've sort of looked at it, let's see what we can do before we make a massive expenditure, and then determine whether it's financially justified. I suggest that we do the same. We have a stage. We could put that in a park. We could put that over here, even in Brown Park, and put a concert down it. We could put it at Heritage Park. We haven't done any of this, so we don't know what the success or the failure or the draw would be from this. Therefore, I think we are very premature to go ahead and build this amphitheater in the hopes that we're gonna have a success out of it that would substantiate the expenditure that we're putting into it. Further, we haven't even budgeted, and we've got, as we all know, a tight budget year. We haven't even budgeted any monies to utilize that amphitheater for next year. My suggestion is we put it a hold. I'm not in favor of building it now, that maybe Mr. Wood would fund, put in the budget one concert, use our stage at Heritage, see what kind of success we have with that, and if that looks successful, move along that, that type of program, rather than carte blanche, build it and hope that they will come. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If we have a motion and a second on the table, but we did have a motion, a second, Bob, a second, okay. Any other discussion? If not, we'll roll call and have a roll call vote. Mr. Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Jack?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
And Mr. Cummins?
No.
Okay. All members voting for the motion, exception, Mr. Cummins.
Now, Mr. Mayor, that we have elected to fund this amphitheater, we need to do a budget amendment. We have an ordinance before us that has had a first and second reading, and we need to have the approval on that. So I'll ask for a second for this.
Okay, do I, we have a motion to approve the second reading and approve a budget amendment in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty dollars, which will come from, was that SPOSS?
SPOSS six.
SPOSS six. We have a motion, we have a second for the budget amendment. And so that's this year's current budget, not the upcoming budget right now.
Okay. Second.
And motion is second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose note?
No.
All members voting for the motion, exception, Mr. Cummins. Okay. The item B here, basically, is the reappointment to fill the terms for the Downtown Development Authority. And I have asked for any input. It is my intention at this point, and, and at the next meeting, in which we will vote a week from tonight, to renominate those members on the Downtown Development Authority, Mr. Zach Kell, Rebecca Johnston, Stan Rogers, and Doug Key. So if anyone has anything between now and then, feel free to send me a note, or at this point, it's my intention to renominate those existing current members. Item C, we deleted. Item D, street improvement program update. I think, get this back on again this, this month, so that we wouldn't lose touch of this serious, of just how serious this problem is and possibly can be. I think you heard a little bit tonight from those talking about our streets. And yet, we have many, many streets in our city that need attention, that are incomplete. We need a complete program to, a plan. We need a transportation plan for our city to, on how we're gonna deal with these, these streets. And as soon as we have that plan, in my opinion, then we have to have a program to address those. How do we, how do we get to them? I mean, we're talking about, you know, millions and millions of dollars, in my opinion, of the street improvements. It's gonna be neat. How are we gonna do that? You know, there's SPOSS funds for transportation, too. I don't know where we are on, with that. We've, we've got to get someone in here. I, you know, I asked, the last meeting, and suggested that we have a, a transportation engineering consultant, finally, come in, and, or at least we need to look at that, and to come in and do a plan of how we address these issues. It's all gonna, you know, it's not gonna go away, I'm right. It's not gonna go away. We're gonna have to do something. Can we, can we meet those that are responsible and try to make them live up to their responsibilities? If we can, that's what we need to do. Those that have moved away and gone away, or whatever, we need to do that. But we need a, a full view of what we've got and the magnitude of this problem before we can decide that, I think. And we, we started something, you know, quite a few months ago, you know, we got going on it, but it sort of got dropped aside. I don't think we can push this thing aside much longer. I think we're gonna have to start to do something. It's very.
So incorporated in your study, they would also be looking at our legalities, that we would be able to either approach existing developers, non-existing developers, or developers who would be coming in and saying, "I wanna complete a project," and seeing what that would be.
That would be, perhaps, that would be part of it. They certainly would have to work closely with our city attorney to make sure, you know, what we can and can't do there. But my guess is that, you know, that there's, there's some avenues out there that might be, we might be able to address fairly quickly, and then there's others that's gonna take a while.
And in the same vein, they, they would be setting rankings, I guess.
Right. Priorities.
And we did have, we did have that a couple of years ago.
Six streets.
What, what I'd like to, what I'd like to suggest is that, you know, give this a thought. Let's, let's take a look and maybe ask our city manager to look at the possibility of what kind of cost we're talking about to include, perhaps, in this FY14 legislation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of, a couple of years ago, I think, there was Mr. Patton developed something similar. I mean, is not our city staff capable of doing something like that and, and to tell us what streets are in jeopardy or in need, and then, then we can have our legal forces look at the legality of what we have, rather than having an outside consultant do it?
Well, I think this is quite a massive project, and I think that our in-house folks have probably got plenty to do and probably wouldn't have the time to devote to this issue that you, that it's gonna require. I think it's gonna be, I think it's really gonna take a lot of time. It's gonna take somebody staying on this, and unfortunately, we're gonna have to be paid, but to stay on top of it and understand what we want from it and address the issue. I mean, I'd like to see them take this from the beginning and, and along with input, certainly, but make it, move forward with it and help us develop some program. I mean, you can imagine the, I mean, we don't even know, really, the amount of money that we're talking about, aren't we? I think we're talking about millions and millions of dollars worth of work out there. Now, how do we get those funds? How do we address it? Do, how much of that can we actually depend on getting from some of the developers that now have either moved in and moved out? Are there any bonds out there, some of which I understand, I understand, that basically don't performance bonds? Maybe a few maintenance bonds, but no performance bonds out there.
And, and part of that project would also incorporate the fact that they would give us a dollar figure then. That's what you're going for.
That's what you have to find out first.
And break it, and then break it down into, with our street department being able to handle some, but then the bulk of it would have to fall back over to somebody else.
It's gonna have to be done, you know, like, heard people say, "Get eating the grass going." Just a little bit at a time. Just gotta do a little bit along, you know? But we got, got to start sometime, but we never get there. Just give some thought to, Mr. Cummins?
Yeah. The only two things I'd say is, we've got a very set of circumstances relative to the streets, so all the way from what the gentleman earlier said, of the gray sky to just streets needing top coating. Some of them have maintenance bonds, and we have a way of maybe forcing developers that are still around to finish those streets. And the other thing is, is probably, a study should be done, whether it's on in-house or outside of house, should be done, and then list off and prioritize according to the most severe conditions first, I would think, and then those that are still under the developer's control, we could look at action to force them to take care of them immediately, because it would be coming out of their pocket. I think, and Mr. Dyer, you can correct me on this, but could we not fund a study on SPOSS six monies that are designated for streets? So it really has no impact on the general fund or on our, you know, on our tax, taxes relative to the general fund. So maybe we ought to look at, next, the next meeting. When is next? Next meeting, maybe make a proposal to do an RFP, go out to an RFP, and see what it will get.
See what it'll get.
Yeah. We've got, we've got a fair amount of that data already, but it is the coordination and implementation of it where I think there is a thing. Jody West has developed an inventory of streets that are currently clearly city streets, and has, and has rated their repair need as prioritized in various classifications and categories. We've done an inventory of bond data where that data could be determined and validated. So we've got some of this base data together, but it becomes complicated in the, by a couple factors. One is, is what has heretofore been the question of, of the questionable streets. Do, do we take those into the, into the fold or not? And that's a, that's a council decision. That's not a state decision. And, and, and of course, then it becomes complicated by other factors. Utility coordination is an example. Maryetta Road, we're, we're probably going to come back to council with a recommendation that we replace water line from Copper Hill, the, the bridge all the way up to, to the intersection of Maryetta Road and the area highway. Those, those things take a lot of coordination and, and review and study. And with basically one engineer on street issues, the mayor's right, he can only do so much. So I think an outside consultant taking this base data that we've got, taking it out of SPOSS and coming back with a specific set of recommendations that are implementable is what we need.
I see this too as, as looking at our overall transportation system, not, not just the needs for repair, but also how our, how our traffic flows and what our near-term and perhaps long-term needs are going to be as far as traffic moving through the city. I think, I think it incorporates the whole transportation plan for the city. And I, you know, I, I think we need to really get serious about this and take a look at it because this is something that's going to be very costly to do, and we've got to do a little bit at a time. We've got to get started. And I want, I'll move this to our next meeting too. We'll talk about it at that time and see where we are at that point.
We have the meeting, now bullet points, whatever, of the proposed different points. So we make sure we are covering all the bases before we run out with the.
We'll try to, we'll try to have an RFP or, or a Q1 drafted before the next meeting, if that's what you're saying.
Not, you mean next Thursday or?
Yes, excuse me. Yeah, well, I'm not sure. We'll try, but I won't.
The reason I was just saying, if we, if you can, because you said, Mr. West has already got a good start on a number of issues, but again, let's make sure that we cover off the, just the different points that we might think about in between so that when we go out with this contract, that we, we have everything we want.
We got it covered.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think that's a good idea, I guess.
One comment that, it's kind of on streets, but it's something we brought up several months ago, about pedestrian traffic on 140, and I think you agree.
Right.
I don't think we've ever heard anything. I don't know if there's anything that happened on it, but it's still, to me, is, is a very dangerous situation for pedestrians to walk from the county fire station to Walgreens. They're walking hand in hand, carrying stuff, and it's, there's no sidewalks. And I just wonder, I know it's a joint operation between the DOT and the city and the county, and I didn't know if there's been any progress on that at all.
Not a lot of progress. There's been some discussion with the DOT. That widening project, improvement project has been confirmed and included in their long-range plans. So that's probably not really tangible progress. It is in their formal plan process, but that is, yeah.
It's, it's amazing. You know, that, when I was county commissioner back in the eighties, almost the nineties, it was also in the plan.
Yeah.
You know, so you can see how long it takes these plans to come through.
The last time I talked to the DOT regional engineer, it was a couple of years ago, and, and he said that doing that would be a major project because you'd have to curb it before you can put sidewalks, and then that makes it a bigger project.
Yeah. Okay. Next item, discussion and possible approval of $7.5 million Jifa loan documents?
Gentlemen, there are not actual documents, but what we do need, what Jifa does need from you is, is a registration of approval for them to go forward with preparing documents. You'll remember that this loan is, the exact amount is as of yet to be determined. It will be based on what our bid results come in at, but we're anticipating somewhere in the seven and a half million dollar range. It's a twenty-year loan, 1.4% interest. So what we're asking council for tonight is, is a vote of approval that we can communicate to Jifa that would give them the adequacy to proceed with preparation of loan documents.
So moved. Motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? If not, those who favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. First reading of the landfill budget amendment, $120,000. I think we basically approved, going ahead with that at the last meeting, that this is the budget, first reading of the budget amendment. It's going to not require a vote or anything, but we will at the, I guess, the next meeting actually do the second reading and actually make the budget amendment at that point.
Please, do we have to have a, if, if one week in between, does that meet our, our ordinance for?
Yes.
Okay, two successive meetings.
Under new business, item A, first reading of the ordinance to authorize Cherokee County Board of Elections and registration to hold the City of Canton elections. We talked about that at the last meeting. It's in your package there. Does anyone have any questions or, or comments? The Board of Elections just asked that we do that resolution, which states that they are holding the election for the City of Canton. Okay, that'll be considered the first reading. Item B, discussion of return of 5.0 acres donated by Icarilock Bluff LLC for public safety facility. This is the five acres in the bluffs that was donated quite some years ago with the stipulation that if construction was not started by January 30th of 2008, that it would go back to the grantor, those to the owner. It, we, I, I, from what I understand, I think they found this out even before I came in, that the, the use of that, it was not a usable piece of property, is what I understand. So rather than, rather than just let this hang on there, because in reality, it's, should have gone back to them, it's still on the tax books in the name of the City of Canton. And by doing this, would put it back on the tax books, back under the previous owner's name. Uh, just, just, just vote the next meeting? Yeah, next week we'll, we'll vote on that. Next item, discussion of the planning commission recommendation, okay, C U R 1305001, Community Baptist Church on Mountain Vista Boulevard. Let's see, Ken, do you want to discuss that? I think, I think we may have, may address, try to address some of the gentleman's points that spoke earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Case CUP 1305-001 is a conditional use permit approval request by Community Baptist Church to operate a church in PUD zoning at 111 Mountain Vista Boulevard. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing in regards to this matter on June 17th, 2013. Planning Commission did recommend approval of a conditional use permit with the condition that the conditional use permit approval be for Community Baptist Church.
Oh. How many, what, what is the size of this facility?
It takes two suites, and at best my recollection, they indicated that it was going to be somewhere around 3,000, maybe 4,000 square feet within that shopping center.
So are they going to build it out? Is it?
Tenant finish on the inside, yes. They would propose to make some alterations within those two suites. The church did sign a five-year lease, they indicated at the public hearing at the Planning Commission.
Ken, maybe you or Mark address the capacity limit of?
Well, occupancy load is set by the Fire Marshal's Office, and, you know, they're the only ones that set what that occupancy load would be. That occupancy load would go towards determinations of sprinklers, that sort of thing, as well as some of the parking requirements, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
We don't know what that, you know.
Do, do we have it?
Yes.
Do we have any idea of the size of the congregation?
They indicated the current congregation is around thirty or forty individuals. They hope that the congregation would, would continue to grow. They indicated that one or two meetings, I believe, were services, that they have had somewhere around fifty individuals attend services. They would have a service on Sunday morning and then have something else on Wednesday evening, with all the two times that they indicated functions would take place during the public hearing at the Planning Commission.
Zach, did I have to go to the question I had? During the zoning meeting, did you have any, any more to speak against it?
Same gentleman that spoke in the ten-minute public input session.
I'd like to ask the city attorney a question. If, if the church goes in that strip center there, could a restaurant then that serves alcohol move in after that?
Yes, because.
It's not damn Sam.
Well, our ordinance, if I remember right, state law doesn't restrict it if it's for a restaurant. And our ordinance says anything that's downtown or in a, in a shopping center. When that, you don't have a distance requirement for anything that's located in a shopping.
That is correct. There was an amendment done to the ordinance since that was brought up and discussed at the Planning Commission meeting between work session and the public hearing, and the city attorney, the staff representative and staff went downstairs and looked that up and provided the information to the Planning Commission. As Mr. Crosby did indicate to me that Mr. Bailey had said preliminarily looking at the space and that without having some full plans submitted, that the occupancy load would be at 100 or less.
I believe there's a restaurant probably already there.
Right, I do understand it's the ones already there, and it certainly would get the license away anyway. I knew that, but I just wondered if it might affect another one coming in, since the church would be there at that time.
We can act on this tonight?
Uh, I don't think, no, we're supposed to act on this at the next meeting.
That is correct.
Next meeting.
I'll save my comments for next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have already addressed item 10D. Item, unless anyone wants to make any comments regarding that presentation Mr. Felton made.
I, I would just have one. Do we know Mr. Felton was representing people who really want the city to take it over? And the county said that they would bring it up to a level, level it off or something like that? Do we have any idea what the paving cost would be from that, of the section that, that is being talked about?
I can address that just briefly. The county has stated that they have a $50,000 budget for paving the road itself.
Oh, that, that's what, that's what they want to spend, that, but we don't know the cost.
That's the budget that they have set aside. The, the re-engineering of that slope, they have no idea what that would, what it costs in there. That's why they're bringing in a surveyor and then an engineer to estimate what that would cost.
What's, what was the length of the entire?
Three tenths of a mile. And that particular zone is about seventy yards, maybe, maybe at the absolute maximum.
Does, does our city, our staff, anybody here know how much it costs to pave a?
Twenty six dollars a.
What is?
We figure about hundreds of thousands of dollars a mile, but it just depends on how much reclamation and base work has to go into.
And whether or not, if you're doing it as an urban section with sidewalks and, and curb and gutter, or just, just paving.
Dave, is that a, is that a, I mean, it's just such a high highs up number. There's so many variables, it's.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Too many variables.
The street question, would you turn off, which was Ash Street?
Ash Street.
If you turn off Ash Street, you are actually in a nosedive. That drop off.
Yeah, it's pretty steep.
It's straight, straight down, so it would have to be filled, and actually, it's a lane in half. So we're talking about what a normal paving job would be. It's on top of the fact, and this is something I know that you would all entertain the thought of. Just don't do anything until we get that project done out there. Senior citizens, we.
We, as individuals, homeowners recognize, you cannot take the action of that.
That street's been torn up.
Coming into the wind until, until that situation's finished.
Yes.
They're talking 1,500 additional loads of dirt, concrete, gush, those without very heavy trucks.
That would be a big part of it.
I think, I think the, the resurfacing would be the minor part of the cost, to be honest with you. Because I went out there, after we got some information from Mr. Felton, I went out there, when they were actually resurfacing Ash Street or resurfacing places that where that had slid, you know? And it had, it had been resurfaced fairly recently, and then the trucks or something messed it up, and they were cutting it out. And there was a guy with a stop, that was, you know, a go slow sign right at the intersection of Ash and Hidden Valley. And so I, when I went back, I went down to the assisted living center and come back up, and of course, I had stopped right on, right on that slope. It is, it's, it is fairly, fairly steep there. So it, it'll take a good bit of constant work to slope that down enough to, to make it a gentle rise there.
If you can imagine a five or 10-ton truck loaded going up that hill and not wanting to stop at all.
Oh, yeah, sure.
The, the homeowners and, and, like townhomes, have had many close calls where the trucks just keep on moving. They don't even recognize the stop sign.
I would suggest that if you would please have our, you or our staff have, continue the discussion with the county, you know. I know what we used to tell people was that, you know, you bring it up to city specs and we'll take it over. And if the county would do that, I think we could, without any trouble, you know, take it for future, from, to the future.
It seems to me that if the county has put 50K in the budget, that they have assumed responsibility for the street.
I think they know it's, I think they know that.
And, you know, and we've already set a precedent with private streets. If you bring it up to where it's acceptable to the city, we'll be happy to take it over. Throw in a few bucks too.
Yeah, I think, I think we could possibly, you know, we, we could do something with them that would be a little bit less than what we would normally do. Say, if you'll bring it up with, you know, put the slope in and resurface the thing after the assisted living center is complete, you maybe not have to do curbs and sidewalks or, because it doesn't happen now, actually, but, you know, if they could bring it up to an acceptable standard, then we could take it and go from there, and perhaps in the future then, be able to do some curbs and sidewalks hopefully. But, that's, if you.
I don't, I don't know about any right-of-way acquisition that might be necessary. If it's one and a half lanes now, we're probably, before we take it on, we're going to want two lanes just for public safety and legal purposes. So we just have to look at all that. But if that's the approach you want us to employ, would be to look at what it, what it would cost to bring it up to an acceptable level.
I could be wrong. My guess is, you know, Mr. Thacker knew the rules, and he knew what it took to do a street. He knew at that point it was like a 50-foot right-of-way. And my guess is that very well may be the case. We may have the right-of-way necessary there.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The original approval for that to be a senior living center happened under the control of Mr. Thacker prior to his bankruptcy or whatever it was that forced him off that property. And then the new owners came in, Brian Staker and his organization, and they took over the property. Was there any arrangements made with Mr. Thacker prior to this that would help that egress and ingress by virtue of the city taking over that property?
Ken's shaking his head, no, apparently not.
So no, no agreements were?
I guess part of the reason, because it was a county street, you know, that was probably part of it.
So to, to take on that project, then that wasn't any real decision by the council or your office to, to give that road some thought before you put in a senior living center?
Apparently, apparently not a lot, no. And not only that, but I don't know that we could have made the county do anything with the road. We could, we might have put a little more pressure on the development there.
Well, it just seems to me that, you know, you've got a safety issue of that portion. I mean, it puts a priority on whatever you do with the impact fees that come off of that to try to appropriate some improvement in roads, getting an interior access to that. Our roads are fine as far as hidden valley, hidden lake subdivision, and of course, the hidden. hidden creek subdivision roads, they have sidewalks on them. And we have sidewalks on one side, and the roads are wide enough for the traffic to be, to go down there and pass. But on that road, it's virtually impossible.
There's not any sidewalk from Ash Street, or there?
There's no sidewalks on Ash Street.
So if you had sidewalks up to Ash Street, you still wouldn't have?
The inference is that if you had sidewalks up to Ash Street, then Holly Springs would be more inclined to support sidewalks down Ash Street, because they go from there to Prominent Point or to the Dollar Store, which is on that corner.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In this study that we're talking about for the streets and stuff, there's two interesting points. They live in a location where they're actually isolated from the city. It's a city limit. Signs there says Salem's, only way to get there is to come in off of Holly, through Holly Springs, through the county, into the city, and they have no way to get out. Similar to Soleil. Soleil has one entrance in and one entrance out. And part of the original package was, when they were building out there, they were going to come off Shoal Creek, I believe, and have access there.
There's an emergency exit there.
Yeah, but there's, there's no street there. Similar situation. What we need to make sure that we're looking at these residential areas, that the citizens in the winter, they aren't going anywhere. If there's ice on the road, similar to the Laurel Canyon, Soleil situation, it's one entrance. So what we need to do is have that as part of the hook for the entire city. We might say we can't fix anything, but at least we're aware of it, and we're aware of it for when developers come in and start saying, I'm going to build in this pristine area here, and how do you get there? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Discussion of stage rental policy. You want to discuss the issues or anything?
I think we've talked about that.
I would, I think what we need to do, you know, we do have different groups want to use the stage, and it takes some of our folks, our employees and staff's time to take the stage out, set it up, and when they're through, go back and get the stage, this sort of thing. We need, we need a, a policy. At one time, we were trying to do just those agencies that the city funds, the library, the Chamber of Commerce, I guess, we got the Y, DDA and others, Main Street, all these groups that would be able to use it. But then, of course, you have requests from the American Cancer Society and different others that, you know, you always feel guilty if you say, no, you can't use it, you know. So, but we need, we need a firm policy, whatever that is, and, go ahead.
Well, I've run into this in my, in my new job, where people are trying to, you know, use church facilities, and typically they want to use it for nothing or, you know, minimal fee. But there's another factor, which I wasn't aware of until I went down to the Archdiocese and got some education, is that there's a liability involved, and if the people use our stage for free, and they have an accident with it, we're still liable. So one of the things that at least the church does is, if you want to use the facility, you have to buy, pay 95 bucks for rental for insurance policy for that event, and you pay it to, to the church. So I think that's something we have to consider, in addition, not just setting a policy for use of the stage, but some insurance protection for us.
I think there's, there's a lot of issues that you need to look at, and if you want to have as many people let them use it if you're not using it, but there is sort of a limit, and there's that liability there. I would, I'd just like to suggest that Jack, if you were you and Bob and Bill, kind of maybe get together, kind of as a committee, and just see if you can develop some policy that, you know, would, would be reasonable for the utilization of that stage, city's not using. All right, the item F, discussion of possible action to amend job descriptions for economic development coordinator and the Main Street director. That is in your agenda package, as you have seen. Does anyone have any questions the city manager can address? Again, regarding those, basically, the original thought was to combine those, the economic development and the events coordinator would kind of be under the economic development director, but I believe this separates those two, or we have an economic development director and the Main Street.
Also incorporate this Main Street director to be involved in the amphitheater.
You would think so.
We would think so.
I guess, to, to, I think that could happen, yes, sir. The Main Street director's time to meet Main Street requirements would require that person dedicate 75% or more of his or her time just to Main Street activities, but I can't imagine that. The amphitheater would take more than 25% of their time, so I don't think it would be a problem for that person to be involved. But also some others, hopefully some folks from the art council could be involved, hopefully some folks from the theater could be involved, so I could see a consortium of people working together to sponsor and promote events at the amphitheater. Jack? Yeah, 11:30 tomorrow, if city council approves a job description.
So you're going to press, actually take action to approve this?
Then you will put that in there. 24% of his kind of, or, or time.
I asked him 25, 24.
Do we have a motion? Have a motion in a second. All those that favor, say if I was saying aye, opposed no, all members voting for the motion. Okay, item G, discussion of planned documents for the city's 457 defined benefit contribution plan. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, there's already been a lot of discussion about this as well. Mr. Mayor, if you'd have to answer your questions, or if council bears here if necessary, but basically this is the defined benefit contribution plan the city council has already agreed to, with the 2% match plan that I think everybody's aware of and has been fully discussed previously. We're asking you for ultimate support for adoption of these, go after that next meeting, if that's okay.
Okay, I'll do that next meeting. Okay, you have the city manager's report, I believe, in your package, you had other items?
Only two things, just to remind everybody about the work sessions, Monday at noon and Wednesday at 5:00. And then because of these two council meetings coming back to back, we will not have an agenda to you tomorrow, probably, it would probably be Monday before we get you that agenda for next Thursday night meeting, because we usually use tonight's activities to affect the next agenda, so this won't be a day or two late, but we'll get it to you still in town for any questions.
Okay, there are no other items there, I'll entertain a motion to, during the executive session, to discuss personnel. Wait a second, I have a motion in a second, does the favor? Opposed no, all members voting for the motion. And, when I be back.